Seven o'clock. You good, Lindsey?
Yep, I'm good.
Everyone's good?
You're just proven, you're proven to your wife.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Woburn City Council of August 19, 2025. Just a reminder to everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Also, please silence your cell phones. If you are able, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark Higgins, if you will call a vote, please.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor DeMers.
Present.
Counselor Demambro.
Present.
Counselor Farullo.
Present.
Counselor Mercer Bruin, absent. Counselor Papalato.
Present.
Counselor Toro.
Present.
Counselor Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
Make a motion to Spence with the reading of the previous meeting's journal and approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the agenda is a petition by Saheli for a special event permit for domestic violence awareness walk at Hon Pon on October 25, 2025, with a request of waiver umbrella liability insurance.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and License.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is Gherbani DBA Tandoor and Curry requests for minor modification to previously issued special permits for an updated site plan to allow for indoor seating of eight persons at 902 Main Street. Communication dated August 13, 2025 was received from Attorney Joseph Tarby.
Make a motion that communications be received may part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to allow the petitioner, excuse me, to suspend the rules to allow the petitioner to speak.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Counselor, Attorney Tabby, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
You have the floor, sir.
Yes. For the record, Joseph Tabby, attorney with Ruben Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, on behalf of Gherbani Jasmine LLC of Sixth Howard Court in Woburn, in connection with this minor modification request at the restaurant at 902 Main Street in Woburn. So I filed with the request a floor plan and a revised site plan, which was revised to address some concerns of Counselor Demambro. The plans have been reviewed by both Counselor Demambro and Tom Quinn, Building Commissioner, and the conclusion was that the proposed minor modification of adding four tables with two seats at each table was a minor modification. And an improvement comes out of this as well, is at the request of Counselor Demambro, we've been able to add two onsite parking spaces for customer vehicles. So reviewing the zoning ordinance in Section 11.12, I believe this falls clearly within minor modification, which would allow the council to approve this request. In addition, I'd like to submit the proposed conditions. Do you incline to act on this this evening?
Make a motion that we receive those as a working draft?
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Okay, if I could just run down the conditions. The first condition is the standard Condition One, referencing the site plan of record, which is dated August 12, 2025. The second condition requires all dumpsters to be enclosed by means of offense while landscaping in accordance with the Woburn Municipal Code and the Woburn Zoning Ordinance. Number three, no double parking of customer vehicles shall be allowed in front of the premises. Adequate pest enrollment control in place and maintained throughout the site at all times is Condition Four. Condition Five, all pallets that take up space in the back alley shall be removed. And Condition Six, that all conditions of any prior special permits shall remain in effect unless modified herein. And I believe Counselor Demambro has at least one additional condition that we've talked about.
Counselor Demambro.
Correct. Attorney Tabby, my only, my seventh would be the onsite parking shall reflect the parking plan on record that you gave us. You know, I was there, I did the site walk with Tsuki and his dad, and I just feel that if he can navigate those food trucks, again, the larger one that's parked there and the shorter one, move the larger one to the right, all the way to the far back, and the smaller one to the left. And the reason why is due to the refrigerated unit that they have in the back on the left-hand side attached to the building. That'll take and enable, free up two parking spaces towards Main Street. So I just felt that that would be a little bit more, give them a little bit more opportunity for customers and a little bit more parking for their patrons.
That makes sense now, that, yes.
We can do that, if it's okay with all my fellow members.
Anyone else? Counselor DeMers.
So just to confirm, Attorney Tabby, that the plan of record that we received is dated August 12, 2025?
August 12, 2025 by Allen Engineering LLC.
Yeah, and the petitioner is aware that they'll need to apply for a common victual license now that they have seating?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Jim.
Anyone else?
Let's make a motion that we return to the regular order of business.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the minor modification be approved with the new site plan of record dated August 12, 2025.
Second.
I withdraw.
You wanted a condition that has not been voted on yet?
Oh, that's right. I apologize. So I withdraw my motion.
Counselor Demambro.
I just want to add to the conditions. Condition number seven, the onsite parking shall reflect the parking plan on record.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. That's it?
Okay. Make a motion that the minor modification be granted with the new site plan of record dated August 12, 2025, with the additional condition as voted on this evening.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Good luck.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda of our public hearings is RTH Management Company for a special permit under Woburn Zoning Ordinance, Section 5.1.29 and Section 5.1, Note 16, to allow for extended business hours for a fast food restaurant exceeding the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 187 Cambridge Road. A communication dated July 21, 2025, was received from Thomas Quinn, the Building Commissioner. Communication dated July 22, 2025, was received from John Cashell, the Planning Director. There is also a communication dated July 23, 2025, was received from the petitioner's attorney, James Giuliano. And further communication dated July 29, 2025, was received from Counselor Viola, regarding McDonald's calls.
Make a motion that said communications be received may part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Giuliano, how are you tonight?
Very well, Mr. President.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn, on behalf of RTH Management Co. LLC, the owner of McDonald's here located at 187 Cambridge Road. Rich Hogan is here with me, who is the manager, can answer certainly any additional questions that the council does have. RTH has been a tenant for quite some time, as you remember. As far as I can remember, this McDonald's has been in existence since I was a child and has been a very good tenant to the district. And we're seeking a special permit under Section 5.1.29 for fast food and Note 16 on 5.1 for fast food hours of operation in excess of 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. and to allow the extension of the drive-through hours to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Sunday. With all the special permits, if you can believe it, that were in existence from going back to the early 90s up until late 2000s, it was not one condition that referenced the hours of operation for this property, if you can believe it. So we are sort of kind of going slate. Going back to the beginning, I did speak to Commissioner Quinn. Just a clean way to do things with regards to there nothing being on file with the hours of operation. So that's the start of it. This property is located in the BH zoning district. Obviously, it's located on the corner of Lexington and Cambridge Road. It does possess a right-of-way that is owned by the city, kind of goes behind the restaurant, behind Dunkin' Donuts. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. Currently, the hours of operation are bifurcated. So the restaurant runs from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, and that's just the inside restaurant. The drive-through hours currently exist at 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Sunday through Thursday, and then 5:00 a.m. with extended hours of 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. So we're requesting just the drive-through hours be extended from Monday through Sunday till 2:00 a.m. So again, the inside restaurant will remain closed through the normal business hours. We're not asking for an extension on that. We did provide some documentation. We provided an existing site plan, a lighting plan, some aerial pics, one of which I'll show today and go through it, pest control records, which were requested, as well as grease trap maintenance and cleaning records, obviously very important, especially with the extended hours that we're seeking. So kind of just to take you through this, as you know, it is in the corner of Lexington Street. There are two ways to get into the McDonald's through the drive-through. One is on Cambridge Road here where the cursor is, and the other is sort of on that Lexington Street side. So drive-through can start, it basically starts right here around the building and then goes to the other side of the building. So, sorry, Mr. President. There are two egress areas, one of which are right here. So people that are not going through the drive-through can certainly go around the building for safety and exit through Lexington Street here. They can also obviously exit after they pick up their order at the drive-through further south. So those are the two areas. Now, there was a question with regards to Commissioner Quinn, asking as far as what happens when there's sort of a queue, or what happens if there's a delay in the order. And the answer is, since I can remember, there are two parking spots that are just dedicated to a queue. So you can't really see them here, but where this tree is, there's one spot behind it and then there's a second spot over here. So those were dedicated, those will remain for queue spots in case there is somewhat of a slower delivery time with the drive-through. It's not much, but there is obviously spaces afforded. And then there's some extra that, you know, typically aren't being used. Those can always go in the queue as well, that you can see labeled in the yellow circles. So just a couple of metrics. My client's big on metrics. I'm sure you understand McDonald's is up on metrics as far as what their response times are, what they're getting the food out in. So just to give you an idea, there, on the peak hours, which are noon to 1:00, there's about 95 cars during that hour, okay? Between midnight and 1:00 a.m., which is a little bit more applicable to our situation extending it, there's about 25 cars from midnight to 1:00 a.m. So typical drive-through service is about 97 seconds throughout the day. So that's from when you get into the line to when you get your food, you're getting your food in about a minute and a half, and that's average of the day. It obviously gets a little bit quicker from midnight to 1:00 a.m. to 90 seconds, okay? So it goes down from 97 seconds to 90 seconds. So obviously, with the calculations my client has done, we're not expecting that to be anymore. We're expecting from 12 to 1:00, those hours, those metrics, to go from 1:00 to 2:00 a.m. And I don't see a reason for that to be any different. So you can figure a car will be about 90 seconds from start to finish. During midnight, excuse me, from midnight, yes, midnight to 1:00 a.m., they get a car every two and a half minutes. So if you think about it, they're getting a car every two and a half minutes, but they're circling them out in a minute and a half. So there's a lot of lull where there's no cars that are in the drive-through for about a minute or so. And again, those are typical, and we figure that to be the same as you go into the 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So really, the additional hour is not going to burden the system, not going to burden the traffic whatsoever. My client has had this down to a science for quite some time. And again, if there is some sort of delay, person gets the wrong fries, whatever the case may be, there is that queue that can be set up, and that was already in existence. So as far as Commissioner Quinn's comments, I think we've addressed most of them. He had five comments. One was confirming that the extension of the hours was just limited to the drive-through, which I stated it is. The inside restaurant will remain open until 12:00 and it will shut down at 11:00. We did supply a lighting plan, so if you look on the aerial here, the lighting will remain the same. So there is some stanchion lights and some right around the entrances. So here, here, and then all the way around the drive-through. And I think there's been adequate lighting throughout the year, so those will remain the same. There is also, we addressed the excess burden. I think Commissioner Quinn wasn't aware of those extra spots for those queues, which we have had and for quite some time. Those will remain the same. We will, obviously, and again, we will hash out any further conditions, but when we get to committee. But one of them was just making sure that dumpster emptying wasn't extended into the late hours, which my client has no problem doing. I think that was intended to be normal business hours like it has now. Management plan and recent records for pest control, we provided that. We will continue to provide that as demanded by inspectional services or the council, of course. So I think his comments have been addressed. We have a few other things, and I want to thank Counselor Viola for walking the premises. I think a lot came out of that. I think there was mention of a bike rack, some mention of discussion regarding pest control and sort of how to get to a newer form of it, which we are in discussion. And then we have the police report. I think we're still waiting on police and fire to come back, but there was a police report that was pulled for the last two years, I believe. So I have had a chance to go through this. I don't know if the council has, but it's voluminous. But basically, you have your parked cars outside, you have your rude and lascivious behavior, let's say, as far as what goes on in the parking lot or adjacent parking lot. You have your traffic reports, you have your accidents and things like that. I think is, you know, Counselor Farullo can state, this is sort of what they call a call-in location. So regardless of something happens specifically at McDonald's, or it happens at Four Corners, or it happens at Dunkin' Donuts, they sort of call it in as McDonald's. So anything out of this last two-year report may not necessarily have anything. A lot of it, as you can see, doesn't have necessarily anything to do with stuff that has happened at McDonald's. And again, there's some, you know, minor stuff that you will see, some suspicious activity, some fender benders, things like that. But I think it's fairly certain that the extended hours will not be adding to these police reports. I think these police reports are just sort of general in nature to any location, any sort of spot, any sort of restaurant. And adding that extra hour will certainly not add to the police reports. So again, we're still waiting for fire and police to come back, but that being said, my client is here, and we can certainly answer any questions that the council has.
Questions for Attorney Giuliano. Counselor Demambro.
Attorney Giuliano, I'm familiar with the location. I'm familiar with the McDonald's. They do a great job over there. The food's really, really good. Boy, I wish I had these hours when I was working second shift, but don't tell my doctor that. Have you did any consulting with the Montville Ave McDonald's? And the reason why I reference that is because they're open 24 hours a day. They seem to run a pretty seamless operation over there. Doesn't seem to be a lot of riffraff over there. I was just curious if you had consulted them at all and said, you know, how do you guys go about it? You're open 24 hours a day. They're running that drive-through, you know, all night long, you know, from midnight till dawn. So I was just wondering if you had any input from them at all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if Rich can speak to that. It is separately owned by another company, but, you know, I think the area, just speaking from knowledge of the area and the operation, I think, you know, that site is a little bit bigger. It lends itself to being off the highway, being on a little bit busier street. I think being a 24-hour shop in Four Corners would probably be a little bit much.
Oh, I'm not saying to open it 24 hours. I'm just saying how they do it security-wise, and they pay attention to the patrons and maybe perhaps the riffraff and how they handle it and how they deal with it, are there cameras, lighting, signage that says, you know, monitored by police frequently, so on and so forth, just to deter any of those calls that could happen, say, after 11 o'clock, from 11 to 2:00.
My client does have a camera system. I don't know if he wants to speak to that a little bit. But typically, the camera system, it's well-lit. I think if you go through it, there's lights always on it. You have adjacent properties that have lights on it. I think the monitoring system he has with the camera system is always working. It's always recording. I think that's probably the extent of what he's doing right now. I think, like I said, there's not a lot of cars that are coming through, especially, you know, where there's not going to be indoor seating. I think that sort of takes a lot away. So it just limits it to the parking. People usually end up just studying the history of this and just talking to my client. People tend to sort of get the food and go. They don't really hang out or loiter in those areas. I mean, one or two may stop and just eat the quick burger, but most of them are not hanging out that late. I think you're seeing that more probably during the peak hours, but not so much. This was, I mean, you can see here, most of these are employee parking. You really don't get a lot of people hanging out, even during the daytime. But to answer your question, I think there are cameras. They're monitored in case there's anything that happens.
That's my only concern.
They're always recording, yeah.
Just, you know.
There's a few around inside and outside, especially with the drive-through, the stanchion at the drive-through and the drive-through window, there's a camera system, and, you know, that's going to continue to be.
Just anything that's visible that can deter anybody from acting up.
And I think especially in the later hours, I think it's more prevalent.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Counselor. I wanted to thank you first and foremost, taking the site visit with me a couple weeks ago. I think it brought a lot to attention what could be added there to help out, like a bike rack, as you said, maybe a couple more trash barrels, so that way their trash doesn't accumulate. I did go by there a couple times between Friday and Saturday nights, between 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Doesn't seem like there's much people hanging out at all. And as you did say, traffic flows very quickly through there. So as of right now, I don't have any issues with this, but I'd like to send it to committee so we can work on some conditions as we've talked about. Thank you.
Counselor Toro, you're good?
I'm all set, thank you.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the council on September 16, and that the matter is referred to the Committee on Special Permits.
Second.
On the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to send a communication to Chief McManus and Chief Kenton, asking their opinions on extending the hours to 2:00 a.m.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes. And then the original motion, a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is DCD RE 14 Harrison LLC for a special permit under Section 5.1, subsection 45, subsection 72, section 8.3.1, and section 15, to allow for the change in use from a residential to sales of automobiles and trucks to expand parking into serve a car dealership on a separate lot not more than 500 feet from the property within the groundwater protection district at 14 Harrison Avenue. A communication dated July 17, 2025, was received from John Cashell, the Planning Director. Further, a communication dated July 21, 2025, was received from Tom Quinn, the Building Commissioner. Another communication dated August 13, 2025, was received from the attorney, Joseph R. Tarby. And those are the communications.
Make a motion that communications be received may part of the permanent record.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Tabby, you have the floor.
For the record, Joseph Tabby, Ruben Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, on behalf of the petitioner. Before I begin our presentation, I'd like to submit two documents. One is a copy of the GIS map to give you an idea where the property is located, and the other is proposed conditions for your consideration.
Make a motion that we receive those and make them permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
All right. With me this evening is Mike Lannan of New Car Lannan Chevrolet, the petitioner. And petitioner is seeking special permits to utilize the 14 Harrison Avenue property for additional parking to the car dealership. Property's located in the BH zoning district, which allows for the car dealership and the parking of its vehicles for sale. Back in 2016, the applicant appeared before this council when they acquired 12 Harrison Avenue, and a special permit was granted to utilize that area as well for parking. So the property at 14 Harrison Avenue contains approximately 3,900 square feet of land, and the demolition of the existing dwelling on that site will allow the petitioner to, you know, square off the dealership property for additional you know, square off the dealership property for additional parking. Lannan Chevrolet Oldsmobile first opened in 1954. The dealership, which, as you know, is located at 40 Went Street, was established by Michael's father, Steve Lannan Sr. It was a family-run business for nearly 70 years till it sailed to the Degasi family. I'm going to ask Michael Page of Griffin Engineering Corp. just to go over the site plan with you briefly. We did submit a revised site plan that responded to the questions asked by Tom Quinn. He wanted to know what the height of the wall was. He wanted to see where the buffer zone line was, and we've added all that to the plan. So, Michael?
Good evening. My name is Mike Page from Griffin Engineering, Beverly, Mass. My apologies, I only brought a board. I didn't realize I could bring my laptop attached to it, but if it's easier for me to show it, or I did zoom in to the area, but real brief, this is the existing conditions plan. 14 Harrison Ave is located on the southwest side of Lannan Chevrolet. It's currently developed as a single-family dwelling, and they're expanding their display vehicle parking area. Zoom in the version of it. Parking area will expand to approximately five feet from all the property lines. We are grading the area towards an existing catch basin and infiltration field. This existing catch basin infiltration field was designed to handle the 14 Harrison Avenue when we did 12 Harrison Avenue back in 2016, anticipating that 14 Harrison Avenue will be acquired at that time. So it was designed with additional 3,000 square feet of, well, to receive additional 3,000 square feet of parking area, which we approximated this upstream areas. So the majority of the area is grading this way to the catch basin, and then we only have a little area grading towards Harrison Avenue, just because it was difficult to get that whole site going towards the catch basin. We did require retaining wall in order to get all the water to the catch basin. The retaining wall is less than three feet, meeting the building commissioner's requirements. There will be no additional site lighting. There's no additional water or sewer, and I believe that's it.
Any questions? Counselor Demambo.
So the infiltration system that's already existing.
Correct.
You said that'll handle approximately the area in question of 2,000 square feet, correct?
So it was designed for 5,000 square feet of impervious area going to it. So when 12 Harrison Avenue was designed, that was 2,000 square feet. Now we're adding additional 3,000 square feet with 14 Harrison Avenue.
So you're going to max that system, pretty much?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, it was, that's, it handles up to the 10-year storm, and after that, it's sort of, there is an overflow in that system that goes into the existing drainage system on the site that goes towards a large covert that goes towards Library Park.
And is there any inspection on that infiltration system that you guys be doing to check and see if there's any silt or anything that's been built up inside of that tank that could limit it?
Not that I'm aware of. I did go over there and looked at it, and the hood isn't stalled. It does have a four-foot stump. It looked like it was pretty clean at that point, but I don't know if it's been regularly inspected and cleaned.
I would ask that that be inspected, just to make sure there isn't, say, you know, it's limited by 1,000 square feet due to sediment and whatever else might have seeped in there. So I would ask that that definitely be inspected. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before we open a public hearing, just from my point of view, this is in my ward. I have spoken to Commissioner Quinn. He has no issues with it. I do hear Counselor Demambo's suggestion that has value. I will say Lannan Chevrolet has been a longtime anchor tenant in that particular area and has always run a nice, clean operation. And anytime that there's any conversation that's needed to be had, they're very willing to have that conversation and great to work with. So with that said.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this petition? Please step forward. Seeing no one. What is the will of the council? We have a list of conditions. There are a motion to add another.
Mr. President, I'd like to add a motion, I mean, add a condition that that infiltration system be inspected, and it's conditioned on that, that that infiltration system can adequately hold that 5,000 square feet, and it's open enough to handle that extra adage of parking area.
Yes.
Through the chair, the Counselor Demambo, would it make sense to condition that it is inspected to ensure?
Yes.
As opposed to, because it, I guess where I'm getting at is, how do we word it, to condition it? If it's a condition and a special permit, as opposed to just a good-faith agreement that they'll take a look at it? But I think maybe.
Because my concern is.
Inspected and cleaned so that it will be able to.
Handle.
Handle that, I think would be the condition, as opposed to just saying having it inspected.
Yes, I agree with that, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor Tarby, does that sound reasonable?
Yes. Yep.
So that's in a form of a motion?
So let me wing it on the language here.
I appreciate that, Counselor Demambo.
Condition that the, I believe, you said 5,000 square feet?
Infiltration, the 5,000.
5,000 square foot infiltration system is inspected and cleaned to ensure that it will be able to handle.
Space.
The added drainage from the new property or the new site for 14 Harrison.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Demambo.
May I read it back?
That's in a form of a motion?
So I have 5,000 square feet infiltration system, sorry, I missed that word, shall be inspected?
And clean.
And clean to ensure the added drainage from 14 Harrison Avenue?
Is adequate.
Is adequate, thank you.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. And what is the will of the council?
Make a motion that the special, yeah, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion and the second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the special permit is granted with the six conditions as discussed.
Seven. I'm sorry, it's seven conditions.
Six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Six conditions.
I did the same thing.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe. Next item on the agenda is Vincent R. Leo Jr. and Barbara M. Leo for a special permit under Section 5.1 Subsection 69 and Section 7.3 to allow for the extension and alteration of the existing non-conforming two-family structure, to allow for reconstruction of a two-family structure, and the continued use of existing non-conforming parking spaces at 56 Union Street. A communication dated July 17, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the planning director. Further, a communication dated July 21, 2025 was received from Thomas Quinn, the building commissioner. Further, there's also DPW comments from today.
Make a motion that the communications are received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Tarby, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Tarby, Ruben Redman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn. Before we get going here, I'd like to submit a few documents here. One's a GIS map that shows the property at 56 Union Street, just to give you an idea where it is. The second is a revised site plan that was revised to address Tom Quinn's questions. He wanted the parking noted on the plan. There was an error in that it indicated it was an R1 zone. It's an R2 zone, so those changes were made. In addition, there's an elevation plan that I'll review, and then finally, a list of proposed conditions for your consideration.
Make a motion that we receive the papers and make them part of the permanent record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the petitioners are the owners of the property of 56 Union Street. They're also residents of the city of Woburn. Requesting a special permit is noted on the petition under 5.169 and Section 7.3. However, in speaking with Tom Quinn, he indicated that the 7.3 should be amended to 7.6, and I would ask the council to make that amendment. So although it could fall under 7.3, 7.6 talks about reconstruction of a non-conforming use of structure when the damage by fire of the natural caused to an extent 50% of its assessed value requires a special permit from the city council. So the request is to allow for the rehab of the existing two-family home at 56 Union Street. The structure is non-conforming because it doesn't meet the dimensional regulations for minimum lot size, minimum street frontage, front yard setback, lot coverage and landscape open space, and then parking spaces as shown on the plan are also non-conforming. Property is located in an R2 zone according to the assessor's office and records in the Department of Inspection Services. The dwelling was constructed in 1900. As a result, it doesn't meet the current dimensional regulations as I've stated. So the petitioner is seeking approval to rehab the existing two-family dwelling that was damaged by a fire on January 21 of 2025. There'll be no expansion of the dwelling, other than, if you look at the elevation plan that I submitted, there'll be a squaring off of the roof in the back, but it'll be, you know, less than the allowable height, but it will not expand the footprint at all. In addition, there'll be seven on-site parking spaces. We reviewed that neighborhood. There were many two-family dwellings in that area, and basically going to be, you know, rehabbing a two-family to a two-family, making it a lot better, more up the code.
Questions for Attorney Tarby? Counselor Papalatto?
Thank you, President. When I first read through this, I saw all these non-conforming zoning requirements embedded in it, but those are existing, and there's nothing really new that we're adding on to that.
No, they're while existing.
All right. I did talk to Inspector Quinn today to make sure he was comfortable with this, and he said he's good with what you've got in front of us, so I will support this tonight.
Counselor To'o?
Thank you. So I support this 100%. Being a contractor myself, I've renovated several houses in Woburn that fall under this condition, and, you know, whether it was a fire or a water damage, in being kind of handcuffed by the 50% rule. It's crazy, especially since it's being essentially put back in the same exact footprint, just renovating the house that was allowed at one point anyways. So coming before the city council for a special permit to do that in a situation where it's, again, being it's the same footprint, just squaring off the roof, again, it's, in my opinion, a no-brainer, so I'm fine with it.
No.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
I'll make a motion to close the, make a motion to amend, is it, do we have to amend the petition?
Yes, you need to accept, I think you took a verbal request to amend the petition from 7.3 to 7.4?
7.6.
7.6.
I'll make a motion to amend the petition from 7.3 of the Woburn zoning ordinances to 7.6.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
President?
Yes?
Remind you, you also need to make the finding in Section 7 as well.
Make a motion that we make the following finding, that the proposed use by the petitioner is consistent with past use of the property and is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Public hearing's still open.
So we should close that before we do the finding?
Probably.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I'll make the motion for the stated finding.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
And I'll also make the motion that we grant the special permit with the six, five conditions as outlined.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Good luck with the renovation.
Good luck. Next item on the agenda is 628 Main Street LLC for a special permit under Section 7.6 Subsection 2 to allow for a reconstruction of a five-unit residential dwelling where both the use and the structure are non-conforming following the fire damage and exceeds 50% of the property's current assessed value at 628 Main Street. A communication dated, excuse me, July 18, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the planning director. Further, a communication dated July 21, 2025 was received from Thomas Quinn, the building commissioner. A communication dated August 13, 2025 was received from attorney James Giuliano, and today we received comments from the DPW.
Make a motion that communications are received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Giuliano, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. President. For the record again, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn. On behalf of 628 Main Street LLC, with me here tonight is Mr. John Flaherty, who's a manager of 628 Main Street. 628 Main Street, Mr. Flaherty bought the building at 628 Main, 2011. Unfortunately, just as the last petition, this was burdened to a victim of a fire last July of 2024. Under Section 7.6 Subsection 2, we are seeking a special permit to reconstruct the non-conforming structure that was damaged in excess of 50% of its assessed value at the property location. The assessed value is, on the records, 1.2 million. So obviously, you're familiar with the building. It's a gorgeous Victorian built around 1880. The building has had similar characteristics from 1880. It's beautiful, as you know. My client does have some respect to the integrity of architectural and making sure that these homes have that historic value, and he's done a nice job with this one as well as the others. So this property is located in the S1 zoning district, sits on 17,000, just over 17,000 square feet of land is non-conforming, being all residential. The site plan and floor plans show the existing structure. It will remain the same, so just to, you know, sort of confirm and reiterate, the only thing exterior that my client is changing is the five blown-out windows that were a result of the fire. So everything else is absolutely remaining the same. Nothing is expanding, nothing is changing. It's just those windows. Everything is sort of interior, the whole interior unfortunately needs to be gutted or was gutted due to mostly smoke damage because of that fire. So the exterior will remain as it does today. That's important to note. We did provide a parking plan showing far more than necessary parking spaces, so there's 12 parking spaces shown on the plan that are used today, three in the front on Main Street, and then the other that'll go in the side parking lot off of Place Lane. I did mention, again, the smoke damage caused I did mention, again, the smoke damage caused all interior damage to the property. The exterior's gonna remain the same. Unfortunately now, because we're in 2025 and this is a four-plus family, we now have to put a fire suppressant system on the property. So that's a lot of the cost that's going to that that we didn't have to do before because it was nonconforming with regards to the building code. So we now have to make sure that we're conforming to that. So we are privy to Commissioner Quinn's comments. We did provide a pest plan, so again, my client did put bait boxes with the information that we supplied. We will supply monthly or on-demand reports. Obviously, once the construction is done, there's no need to do any further remediation for a multi-use, excuse me, a multifamily residential dwelling, but we will do monthly as Commissioner Quinn has suggested. It's not a problem. Right now, there's no extensive rodent, but we will keep that in control. Again, we provided a site parking plan that shows adequate, more than adequate parking on the site, and we are privy to Mr. Duran's comments that just came in today. Again, we will capitulate if we need to rip up, we're not expecting to, but if we need to rip up Main Street, we will do some adequate paving according to the municipal codes. That's not a problem. I think that's in fair manner with any project that rips up a street, so not a problem at all. Again, based on the fact that we're just replacing five windows through the structure, remodeling the interior, nothing with regards to the exterior, clearly, this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood by putting these five new windows that match the rest of the windows in. So we would ask, obviously, that the council does approve this on the floor tonight. We do have some, I did sort of draft up two conditions based on what Mr. Duran mentioned and Commissioner Quinn, one being monthly pest monitoring reports for pest management plan by a qualified person submitted to the city inspectional services department from the time of approval of this special permit until certificate of occupancy. And then number two, any required utility work on Main Street requiring opening shall be required associated pavement restoration in accordance with the Woburn municipal code. So I would ask that the council approve it tonight based on, in those two conditions added to it.
Questions?
Just a comment?
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
I have no problem with this at all, and I do think that we should move tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor DeMiro.
I have no problems with this either. I support it. It's a shame it had to happen. I feel bad. Just to touch base, no exterior siding or anything like that needs to be replaced due to any type of fire damage or heat, flexing or anything, deflection.
Not to the House. No, there may be some replacement around the windows where new windows are going in, but that's the extent of it.
Trim work, whatever. And the roof is intact and solid. Excellent. I got no problem. I'll be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Counselor DeMiro? What's the date of the site plan of record, Attorney Giuliano?
Supplemental as of... They asked me to read this. It is on the plan that I submitted. It is, say, July XX. Is that what you're seeing? Is that why?
I'm just concerned because we do want to have that as a, we do want to have that as a condition in the special permit so that we have the site plan to go by.
Yeah, so I would, Counselor DeMiro, I would say it should be submitted as of the date of the petition, which is July 7.
And you're okay with that being a condition as said forth on?
Absolutely. Yep. That's our site plan. We're sticking to it. Yep.
Very good. Any other questions?
I would also add that if we're making an agreement to the pest control, that we just do the standard condition for the pest control and...
That's fine.
...so there shall be adequate pest control in place prior to the commencement of any site disturbance and maintained through the all-site development construction phases?
That's fine.
And just from the chair, if my co-councils will allow me, this is in my ward. I have spoken with Commissioner Quinn at length. He has no issue with it. I'm very familiar with the property and the surroundings. I see no problem with it. I also look at Mr. Flaherty's track record in the past, and it stands for itself. And just for the public record as well, I received a phone call from the Honorable former state rep, Carol Donovan, that currently is the president of the Place Lane Condom condominium association, and she is in full support of this petition as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor DeMiro?
Attorney Giuliano, is the site plan for 1825 listed under A1 dot zero in the lower right-hand corner?
The site plan that was submitted with the supplemental is labeled C1.
Okay. Because of the plan I have here, that's why I just referenced that number.
Yeah, there was, there was an updated one that I supplied after Commissioner Quinn asked for the parking plan. So that's, so that's more of the architecturals.
Okay.
But then there was a request by Commissioner Quinn for the parking plan, which sheet C1 was that site plan, parking plan built in.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But both, sorry to interject, both should be added for the record, though.
Any no other questions?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Just date and name and address, please, sir.
I'm Duffy, 38 Alfred Street in Woburn, and I'm here in support of Mr. Flaherty's petition to rehab that historic house. As you know, in the past, the houses that Mr. Flaherty has done, namely the historical society, the tid house, and the crown jewel of all, St. Anthony's Church, and you can see by that work, anything that Mr. Flaherty does is first-class, and I would expect the same here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? How are you tonight, sir?
Great.
Just your name and address, please.
John Marshall, Two Place Lane. Been living next door to the property for about 22 years. Mr. Flaherty, for the most part, has taken very good care of it. He still gets a grass cut and it takes care of it. I don't, I haven't seen the parking plan. The thing that concerns me is we've been living there for 22 years and I've seen, you know, especially when it snows, parking gets really tight over there. And if they put five units in, probably everybody's gonna have two cars. Concerning about what are they gonna do with 10 cars because it's gonna be really tight? So that's one concern. The other thing is at this particular point, there's a large maple tree in the southwest corner of the property that's been dying for the last couple of years. It's been dropping a couple, it's dropped a couple of big branches. Recently, one of them hit my fence and broke the fence post, which I fixed, but I would like to sort of deal with one owner versus five owners when it comes to getting rid of this tree because it's evidently dying and it needs to be taken down. The other thing that concerns us is there's also a telephone pole on the property. I don't know if it's in the plan, but it's in the, that's in the southwest corner also. Probably been on the property for 50 years. It's leaning. I'm just, you know, concerned about that. Other than that, we're pretty good.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Giuliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as, just to address some of those comments, I mean, the, again, we're only changing five windows, and I understand some of the concerns. I would say to the neighbor at Place Lane that, you know, Mr. Flaherty's here, there's Mr. Flaherty and his son that are the only managers of record, so they're fully available at any point to exchange numbers, and he's, you know, obviously, track record in the city is impeccable and more than willing to, you know, to help out and do anything neighborly that he can. So that's pretty much all I would add to that, so.
Thank you. Just clarification, the telephone pole wouldn't be anything the petitioner has any control over. City of Woburn has a longstanding record trying to correct problems with telephone poles. That is a... Just step forward, please, sir.
Sorry. It's been sitting, it's been on the property for I don't know how long. My wife's family actually owned Two Place Lane before we bought it. They've been there since 1953. I think it's been since then. There are no wires on this telephone pole. I'm not quite sure why it's there, but it's leaning, and it's just a safety concern.
Are you agreeable to speak with Mr. Flaherty?
Sure, I can do that. Yep.
And if there's no good resolve, feel free to reach out to me as well where it is my ward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Mr. Pauley, how are you?
President Dillon, how you doing, sir?
Very good, sir.
Counsel, thank you, guys. Appreciate you guys all so much. My comment-
Please identify-
Ken Pauley, 5 Marion Street, North Woburn. My comment or suggestion doesn't have anything to do with the applicant, but more along the lines of the instrument that would require him to ask for a special permit. When I first looked at this, my, for the record, my father was a firefighter for 30 years, and when I hear the stories of dealing with fires and floods, you know, we're talking about victims here. And as we, I look deeper into Section 7.6 and the nonconformity issue, then my mind runs to, okay, what if a mega storm hits 855 Main Street? Right? We nix the clusters? So would 50, potentially 50 people be subject to special permit to take care of their property? So I hope that moving forward, that maybe there is an amendment of some form to 7.6 so that maybe it's more in line or doesn't have any unintended malice that requires maybe some people that shouldn't be subject to special permit, in my opinion. All right? Thanks, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. What is the will of the council?
I'll make, we have to do a finding under this, Mr. President, so I'll make a motion that we make the finding that the proposed use by the petitioner is consistent with the past use of the property is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Madam Clerk, just if I may, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, for the record, do you have the number count on the amended conditions? I just want to make the motion that we codify those conditions. I think there was four. Site plan of record, the pest control, and then the two as presented.
I don't have anything, and there was no motion to accept them. So right now, you have no conditions.
Okay.
Right, so we need a motion. Attorney Giuliano, you have listed a-
You can't speak, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
So I had to-
You have the two that he presented.
I don't have all the warnings because he wrote very-
You have them written down?
One was the monthly pest control, which you made comments so that you would like it to default to the regular one?
Sorry?
He spoke of a monthly pest control, but you-
Oh, I didn't know that that was a proposed condition.
He can't speak. And then you said if you could use the standard one instead, standard language for pest control instead, and he agreed to that?
Yes. Okay, so that the-
The one is the pest control, standard language.
One's the site plan of record.
And then, sorry, I have to flip back to my page.
One is Jade Devance.
Any required utility work-
And then the curb-to-curb on any required utility work on Main Street.
Correct.
I don't think the site plan was actually made a motion for a condition.
Site plan was July, what did you say, 15?
So how do you want to do this? You want his first or?
What's that?
You want one to be site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll go with one will be the site plan of record, which is July 7, 2025, titled C1. And then the second condition would be the language for the adequate pest control.
And there was one for, third one would be-
And then the third would be the DPW superintendent's comments relative to any impact on Main Street that the paving will be curb-to-curb. Good. I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit with the conditions as outlined.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everyone. Good luck, John.
Next item on the agenda is CB Silver LLC for proposed zoning amendment to amend Section 7.3 and Section 7.4 to give the special permit granting authority for single-family or two-family dwellings subject to abandonment or not used for a period of two years, as the city council. The committee report from the Committee on Ordinance, Charts, and Rules was received, ought to pass. There's no communications.
Attorney Tabe?
Yes, good evening. Joe Tabe, attorney for the applicant, Woburn Redmond, 500 Unicorn Park Drive-In in Woburn. At the last committee meeting, the committee reviewed and discussed the city solicitor's opinion on whether the proposed ordinance conflicts with mass law. On July 21, 2025, the city solicitor filed his opinion with the chair of the ordinance committee, Mr. DeMiro, concluding, in conjunction with building commissioner Quinn, "We do not foresee ways in which the proposed change can be abused in direct conflict with the purposes of the zoning ordinance. This provision will be limited to one- and two-family homes in residential zones and will have review by the council as well as the building commissioner, and research shows that there are very few instances of this type in the city of Woburn." That was a direct quote from the opinion of the city solicitor. Committee voted unanimously to send the petition back. This full council ought to pass. So unless there's any other questions, I'd ask the council to move on the committee report.
Counselor DeMiro?
Yeah, just a comment. This is something we've been working on for quite a little bit. I do want to extend my appreciation to city solicitor Salvati for providing an opinion that included examples of other communities that are, you know, not using this for any type of nefarious backdoor deals or anything like that, but as another tool in the toolbox for somebody whose property has lapsed out of an allowable nonconformity, to be able to come to the city council and ask for a little grace in allowing that person to go back to that two-family, to allow them to build something that would correct a blight in a neighborhood. And I think we all have several properties in each of our wards that we think could benefit from this. In the market as it is right now, you know, trying to force folks to turn something that was a two-family home into a single-family home right now, the market does not dictate that as possible. So would we, I ask you, would we rather kick this problem down the road for multiple years where neighbors are seeing an unsightly property or blighted property? Or would they like something that's a redeveloped residential home in their neighborhood that takes care of an unsightly property in their neighborhood? And I know that I have several in my ward. I think this, again, they would have, the developer or the petition would have to come to us and ask for us to make that determination on behalf of the neighbors as opposed to just allowing it by right. So I think having that in our control goes a long way of adding another toolbox and getting these properties redeveloped in the city to make our neighborhoods better. So I would urge my colleagues to vote in favor this evening.
Thank you for that breakdown on layman's terms for-
Thank you.
-the public to grasp. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Make a motion that the order be adopted by roll call.
Second.
That passes. Roll call, please.
Approved by roll call. Counsel Campbell?
Aye.
Counsel DeMiro?
Aye.
Counsel DeMiro?
Aye.
Counsel Ferrullo?
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin is absent. Counsel Papalatto?
Aye.
Counsel Toro?
Aye.
Aye.
Counsel Toro?
Aye.
Counsel Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is under committee reports from the committee on finance that the order approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a payment in lieu of property taxes agreement with Onyx Development Group at 120 Commerce Way, a committee report received ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted?
Second.
A motion and a second to committee report be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
From Public Safety and License on a petition by PeopleFit for a special event permit on September 27, 2025 with waiver of umbrella liability insurance, a committee report was received ought to pass.
Make a motion that committee report be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
And the request was second-class motor vehicle sales license name change from Alex Auto Brokers to Alex Auto Brokers, Inc. at 505 Main Street. Committee report received ought to pass.
Make a motion that committee report be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
No further business on the agenda.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
There's a sec, a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:07.